Ready? All right. I am going to talk little, if at all. Welcome, everyone, to night two of the budget presentation with the select board and budget committee. Um, and uh, yeah, I don't really have much more to say, so I'm gonna hand it over to David to orchestrate.
Welcome back for those of you that back in round two. Um, we did get a few calls from people today about their desire or willingness to travel. Uh, so, and we just said, we'll do the best we can. If you don't think it's fit to be traveling, don't come out. And if we have some follow up questions, we'll be back in touch with you. So when we get to those people, those presentations, I'll let you know. Um, first up, oh, everybody was here the other night except for Jerry and Laurie, so maybe you could tell everybody who you are.
I'm Gary.
Yeah.
From previous.
Party, uh, county committee.
Budget.
Budget committee.
On the budget committee.
And, and I wasn't here last night either. Oh, you're not, my mic, I'm on slide.
Oh, there we go.
From previous. Or Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. It's all running together. It's been a long wait for any. Um, I think everybody knows everybody else. We probably won't spend much time doing that anymore. Um, for everybody's benefit, we're still working from the draft in the lower left hand corner that says February tenth, twenty twenty five. We check that every night when we, before we get started. Anybody have any questions from the other night that didn't need to further addressing at this moment before we jump into the rest of it? No, good. Uh, we're on page seventeen. And Jerry and Laurie in the front is the schedule of who's up and when. And we, we worked through the other one the other night. Um, first up is Veterans Park. He had to speak about the Veterans Park is Eric Giger, Robin.
I'm on. The Veterans Park is the gateway of Lincolnville Summit between Breezeman Park and Lincolnville Community Library. The focal point of the pack is the honor roll memorial, which lists the names of service, men and women mustered from Lincolnville who served in the military from the war of eighteen twelve to present day. I could read the rest of it, but I don't think, I just wanted to give you a generalization of everybody know where it is and stuff. And so, um, we have a lot of comments about the place. It's very well kept and, and, um, we needed, um, some upkeep this past year and, I came to ask the town, what, what should I do? And they suggested that maybe, um, there wasn't money in the account. We couldn't wait until July because of the sidewalk thing that was supposed to happen for that. But anyway, um, so we, uh, we raised six thousand dollars and we used, um, uh, quite a bit of that, most of that, uh, doing the groundwork out behind and, uh, uh, the riprap and hopefully trying to get rid of burdocks, which, um, uh, it was about seventy-five percent successful on the docks. You just can't get rid of them. Those, one of Lincolnville's native plants that.
She uses it as a pound flower.
Pound flower. So, uh, anyway, uh, so this year, um, the only thing that's really changed is the, the mowing and basically and some maintenance that we need. And I put in the request so that, uh, we'd be able to take care of the mowing there this year. It used to be that the mowing was done for nothing. And then last year, um, very graciously, the town kind of squeezed it in. Uh, something happened. I don't know why, but it got mowed. But this next year, it needed to be in the budget. So it's, it's in the, it's in the budget this year and we do need some other maintenance. We did some other stuff. We had the flags, we did the painting flags. Um, um, Walt Simmons donated and redid the flags. He did the flags originally. Uh, I mean, not originally, but when we rebuilt the park and then they needed to be redone again. It had been that long since two thousand fourteen, I believe it was, and it doesn't sell. Uh, and then, um, what's the, what's the boy's, the gentleman's name that, that, uh, does the Breezeman Park and stuff and stuff in the last year?
Knights?
No, um, he does the maintenance and stuff.
Oh, Robin.
Row, row, yeah. And he, he did, he did some staining on the back and stuff that you never see from the road stuff, but needed to be prevented maintenance. So, um, that's, that's what we're looking for. And I think it's well needed, but it's, you know, I know this is a hard year. Questions? So.
That would take that would roll in as far as the lawn care, I mean, things of that nature. That would roll into the town last year? We took, we took care of it, you know?
Yeah. But I mean, this, it's not the money represented here, isn't, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why wouldn't it be rolled in?
Yeah, well, it's included in the bid this year.
It is included in the, yeah, yeah, I am. All right, okay.
But it's separate.
But it's separate from this.
So the thousand dollars is just for sort of general maintenance?
Yes, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Is that right?
Yes, but.
And weed whacking. That was another thing.
Weed whacking and, and the kind of stuff that needs to be.
All right.
Did you, did you do a good job?
He did a wonderful job. He did a wonderful job. Yeah. And, um, um, the, um, the ladies that work at the library are, are, uh, coming to, to do some, some work, you know, to, to the, um, lilac bushes and stuff that are there. That's all volunteer. They're, they're, they're doing that. So we get, we get a lot of stuff volunteered, but I feel it. To move forward, we need, yes, Robin.
Well, so now I'm confused. Does this thousand dollars include anything for mowing or?
I think it does.
I think it does too.
I think it does.
Oh, okay. So you just parsed it out amongst the?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Gary White here? I'm not gonna go too far because I'm gonna talk a little bit on the next page and then he's gonna break back up to do some other. Uh, then no more questions. That concludes the municipal support on page seventeen. We'll flip the page and go to page eighteen and talk about boards and committees. Um, we have more boards and committees than are listed on this page, but only certain ones request money or have money, um, available. So that's why the list is kind of short. Select Board, uh, gets a whopping stipend every year, uh, in members. Uh, and we have a little bit of money budgeted if something comes up for their training or all the selection fund. Uh, conservation commission is not seeking an additional appropriation, but they would like to carry their money forward. That money was fundraised years ago. It doesn't seem appropriate to take money that was fundraised and used to use for another purpose. Uh, planning board, uh, they have training money. Uh, we pay a recording secretary to take minutes at their meetings. As an employee, and then we have some supplies for copies and notebooks and training manuals and whatever. Uh, Lakes and Ponds Committee is supposed to be Gary Gulation as the chair, but, uh, late this afternoon, Gary's plow guy had yet to show up, so Gary didn't shoot. He said, I'm not coming. And I said, I don't blame him. Um, you have a pretty good description, uh, in the budget on page eighteen of what they do and what they'd like to have money for. Roughly the same, uh, work is what you've seen them explain in previous years, if you've been here. Uh, but, um, they haven't spent the money because they haven't had the chase in water. I don't know. I think people could probably read that explanation themselves and probably don't need me to explain it, but I'd be happy to try if you so desire. Uh, and then the big kicker on that page is the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. Um, as I mentioned on Tuesday night, that is a placeholder amount. Um, town has gone out for bid for, um, or not so much for bid, but soft proposals for consulting services. Uh, we have three proposals we received back. All are underneath that amount. Uh, but they, we didn't have them when the budget was put together, so it was kind of, that's just catch, can I, in the panel that's been charged by the select board, um, to review those, uh, proposals hasn't met, but I would anticipate before this comes back to, further review, um, that there'll be a little more direction, certainly before the select board has done their evaluation and comes back to the budget committee.
Good question. Yeah, um, can you share with us what those bids are? What, what those RFPs, what, what, what the three numbers were?
Uh, I don't have those in front of me, but yes, I can, certainly can.
Yeah.
Uh, I think they range from twenty-five thousand to about ninety.
Okay, thanks. Just get an idea of what we might expect.
I, I have a smaller dollar question, but.
That's okay.
I'm just a little confused about the recording secretary and the planning board because it looks like we never spent it in fiscal twenty-four. Um, and we haven't spent it yet in fiscal twenty-five, which I mean, I could see that maybe it's spent once a year, but.
It gets paid hourly.
You're looking at, you must be looking at the wrong line, Robin.
Mm-hmm. Planning board.
We expended five hundred and sixty-four dollars through the half year.
Yeah. But it says the recording secretary is two thousand of the two thousand nineteen thirteen. There was nothing. I mean, if you look at fiscal twenty-four, it looks more like the professional development or something.
Yeah, it, it all depends on, it, first thing is, as Baylor said, the, uh, recording secretary paid on an hourly basis. It all depends on who applies for, you know? They met probably a half dozen times last year.
Yeah, it was minimal.
And if you go back, turn back the hands of time far enough, they were meeting twice a month for hours on end. When we had the cell phone tower.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, issue, they were meeting from, you know, seven o'clock at night till eleven or whatever, couple of times a month and.
So it's more of a contingent if something comes up that they have to meet.
Well, if, when they meet and they have, they've had a couple of meetings, um, this, they just met last night, actually. Um, so when they meet, she comes and takes minutes and then types them up and sends us a bill for her time and we pay her.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions about boards and committees at this moment? Well, this, I must have talked to you all in depth the other night. There's no, we'll flip the page again and we'll go to municipal support. And one of the Gary's here to talk right now about cemetery, which is part way third line down on the page.
All right, Cemetery trustees were responsible for overseeing the upkeep and abandoned graves in Lincolnville. We also ensure the American flag that posted on all abandoned graves on Memorial Day to Veterans Day. There are approximately thirteen known abandoned grave sites in Lincolnville. Most are on private land and not at all accessible to the public. We must get permission from landowners to access cemeteries on private land. These abandoned cemeteries have had very little maintenance done over, uh, other than general mowing and trimming. And over the years, stones have toppled or become damaged. During the past year, the trustees have worked hard to get dead trees removed, fallen gravestones reset and damaged stones repaired. To see examples of what we've accomplished, please visit the Fletcher on the Cross Cemetery on High Street. Um, also add to that, um, Sylvester on Route One. Uh, we've done an extensive amount of work down there and it's not a hundred percent complete, but pretty full of it. Our plan to keep repairing and restoring the accessible sites in the coming years is painstaking work. We appreciate the support we receive from the people of town of Lincolnville as we continue these projects. Thank you for your patience. Um, and this year I put in a request for ninety-six hundred, continue with that. Part of that is mowing tree work. Here's an example of, uh, of a tree that was in Fletcher that cost us, uh, around, I think it was eighteen hundred dollars. Is that what it was? Eighteen, eighteen, I think it was eighteen hundred dollars to remove that tree. Um, um, there was other tree work done in some of the other, other cemeteries. Um, that's just, and I put in for a thousand dollars for this next year because we, we're getting, you know, it's like the roads in Lincolnville for many years. Uh, we didn't have a real good plan about what was gonna get hot car. And now we, we've got them on locating and hopefully get the cemeteries in that thing. Our restoration work, we're asking for, we've got, we've got money to, to go as to July and stuff, but we're looking for that. And to continue through sixteen hundred and then extras that come in are fifteen hundred. And, uh,
What, is extra sort of like a contingency if you go over another categories?
It, it, you just, you never know what's gonna happen and things like, things like, um, well, um, having, uh, Nick Berry come out and put the covers and stuff on Fletcher, the ones that, so they don't get knocked over by the snowplow and, and all, and don't get sprayed with salt and stuff. Um, and also we hired Nick this year to go out. We had a brand new cemetery, uh, and showed up. The Farah Cemetery. How many people know where the Farah Cemetery is here? So, so you go up the Green Acre Road and you get almost to the Bellmont Down Line. And now, just before you make that first little corner there, there's a path now that goes down. I got permission from the landowners. We have a path that's already cleaned in and gone up and, and Nick cleaned up, took the dead trees that was falling in, and we still got tipped over stones and stuff up there. There's like four or five gravestones up there. And we're responsible for it, even though it's a, it's on private land, but the person bought the land, not having anything to do with the people who are buried there. So, and he's very generous, but let us, we're gonna replace the chain fence and, uh, keep it, you know, do our, do our job is what the, what the plan. So that, that was stuff like came up. And that's things like for Nick to do that surprise. I guess the color surprises. Because his fifteen hundred surprises.
Well, the, the covering of the, gravestones next to High Street and Fletcher.
Yeah.
That's not a surprise. That's not really an extra.
No.
That should not, maybe not the right word, but that's all right.
Well.
We don't want, you know, we don't want anybody to think it's a slush fund so you can go around.
For all, all the veggie burgers you can eat.
Right. Yeah, probably.
I figure mowing is my thing tonight. No, I just, is this mowing also part of the, the bid that we're putting out? For the rest of the town or is this?
No, no, this is a separate, this is a separate group. This is the drink waters have been doing it. That family's been doing it for multiple years. The price is somewhat fair and any, they mow and clean up, pick up the sticks and they clean, they clean it up and, and, um, I, I don't have any complaints. They never, they never call me. I have, I call them in the spring to say, just wanna make sure it's done by the mowing. That's all. Yep, well, let it down and they take care of it. They take care of it. Um.
I think they've been doing it for more than twenty years.
Well.
Cause I think they've worked it on one.
Probably have, probably have. So, uh, here's a couple more pictures of Fletcher that, some of the work that was done. And, uh, the stones have been cleaned up. Um, we had a really hot stone in, in Sylvester. Uh, somebody shot it with a shotgun and, um, blew through a gravestone, blew. And, um, uh, our guy has taken that gravestone to his house. And he's repetitive. I mean, it, it's gonna be okay. It's gonna, I mean, that's the kind of stuff and all that takes time. And, and, and like I said, there's been nothing really done for years for these cemeteries. And, uh, we're trying to catch up on it. And so at some point in time, uh, if we can, if, when we do catch up on these thirteen cemeteries, there's, uh, it, it'll be just an ongoing maintenance program with, with. We'll, we'll be able to, we'll be able to budget and stay up with it really well, really well. We have another cemetery down here right behind us. Uh, we're trying to get the land, trying to get in contact with the landowners. Uh, Revolutionary War, uh, gentleman is buried there down here on, um, name of that one?
New York, Long Island?
Not in Park, but it's not.
Golden River.
But it's Pol- Poland off the pole and it's on Mike Cummins and some other people's property that own a cottage there. And the property line goes right straight through the cemetery. And, um, Mike Cummins has no problem with us going down there and doing whatever we have to do to restore it, but we haven't. I need permission from the other person. So, I don't, any other questions? Yeah, yeah. This may be off topic, but as you probably know, there's a couple, it looks like a couple damaged, uh, headstones behind the salt shed. You know, you know, you know, you know where I'm, what I'm talking about. Okay. Are those from Lincolnville or from another town or?
I'll, I'll take one of those.
You take, you take the high. I'll take the, I'll take the easy one.
One of the stones, we were able to identify where it was from by using Find My Grave. And it was, uh, which is a website.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you can, anyways, um, it was one that disappeared apparently from the town of Rockport a long time ago. Uh, somebody that, somebody replaced the stone in the cemetery because there's a new stone there. But, uh, we contacted the town of Rockport and they sent somebody over and Matt and I helped get you die load it in the truck and away it went.
Okay.
But there's still a stone there that there's no known identification.
Gotcha.
Where it came from. And then there's the obelisk. Which is in the stuff.
The, yeah. Yes, and that, that actually, the people that are, names are on that are from Long Island. And they have, they have their own stuff and they don't want it. So like, it would look good if it was in battery and it should be like that. I know. Yeah, well, you know, like. You know, I've been working it three times, over there, I've been working this three times since I saw it would be great. I would fall over if I. Okay, no, I.
It's, it's inscribed.
There is inscribed, but the people want nothing to do directly with it. We could always put it somewhere. And how it got on Winzer's Road in Lincolnville and set up as a monument and whole thing. And there's no ties whatsoever. We have no.
Well, it sounds like it's a town owned thing, huh? I mean, rattle opportunity. You too, Randy. Can Nick raise your front yard obelisk? Anyway, staying on topic.
That's why.
Any, any more questions for, uh, Dollar Figures at Rosie's Asking for Cemeteries?
While you're still sitting here and talking, well, he's also the chair of the Memorial Day Committee and he's gonna talk about that in a second.
Department.
It's twenty-two.
Oh, I don't, yeah, it's the final day.
Now, you want me to talk about the other one?
No, I'm the one on there. I get it. So, um, um, you have things listed out. You know what things cost and so, um, I will tell you that, uh, the, uh, the, there's meters. Uh, they, they, they jumped this year. And so I put in, I put in for, for two hundred. But I actually.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Huh?
You put in for two fifty.
I put in, it says two fifty? Don't say two fifty. Oh, that's twenty-four. Okay.
You might have put in for two hundred and changed it to two fifty.
But, yeah, it's gonna be three hundred this spring, but I can take it out of, I can juggle this year, but going forward, we're gonna need three hundred for that, for me.
So should this be three hundred for next year?
Well, it, it, it should, it should, yes, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna push, I don't wanna push any buttons. What, what, to be honest with you, without buying anything, we haven't paid anything for a speed dial. And we haven't paid anything for membership. So that's fifty dollars maybe, uh, that I can save in the town, in front of the, and put it on for that.
But you're gonna need it this spring.
But I'm gonna need it the following.
Yep.
There, so, but that's, that is totally up to you guys. I just wanna be upfront and aboveboard with that, with that. But everything else, um, the other thing is, how do you make up with flags? Did you and Karen?
Well, yeah, we got them ordered and we got them. The flags and the grave markers have gone up significantly. There's these little plastic grave markers that they use and they're now like sixteen dollars a piece.
Jeez.
And so, and that was, yeah, and they're, and they're plastic. And those were the least expensive ones we could, could find from a place in Bangor. We used to get them, from a guy in Searsport and he passed or, so, um, unfortunately, flag prices have gone up significantly. And even the twelve by eighteen flags we use are almost two dollars a piece.
This, this year, I went through our flags. And any flag that was. and any flag that was not stained or wrinkled in any way, shape or manner, they're upstairs. I saved them and, and I've got, I think I got enough flags for this year, but this is for the following year when we're gonna get here again and I need those markers. So, yeah, that's, that, um, yeah, the price has gone way over, way over. So, other than that, uh, I hope town is satisfied with Memorial Day runs. And, and uh, if there's anybody who'd like to see anything any different, uh, right now I'm a committee of one, which I'm very happy about. And I'm glad to give the committee over to anybody that has to think that over and, and make it a different memorial. Is that something you were interested in, Mr. Mike?
I, I couldn't live up to the job of your job.
You are able to get the assistance you need from volunteers.
I, um, I'm tickled to death, it works wonderful, it's so great. Working with the staff, town office and uh, that we make a very successful memorial day. I think everybody's been very pleased, if not, then.
Speak up. All right, any other questions on Memorial Day?
Sounds good, thank you.
Don't go anywhere. We're going to go back up to the top of page nineteen and talk about uh, Historical Society. Diane O'Ryan was scheduled to be here, she begged off from coming. Um, the request is the same at fifteen hundred dollars as it's been for a number of years. Uh, Mr. Gary is also on the Board of Direct Trustees. Director, whatever they are of the Historical Society and graciously offered to answer questions if there were any on the request.
I will tell you that, um, as you know, we've done, how many people have been there to look the building up since it's been reconstructed? I mean, they've really done a tremendous job. Uh, what's basically left is painting the two, I think just the two sides of the building and left to paint there. But we did get hit just recently from the uh, from the sewer development that we needed a uh uh, grease trap. And so, yeah, um, yeah, we needed a grease trap. Anyway, that, some of us are not in agreement, but that, that we, we're gonna accommodate. But that's another expense that we weren't planning on. Um, so driveway's been the hot top, we have a new donated stone uh, marker on the front, you've seen that. Um, a lot of work, if you go by there on Friday, there are at least a minimum of seven to eleven volunteers working there, uh, every Friday organizing and and uh, we've been working uh, very closely with the Fansworth Museum in, in Rockland and also uh, museum in um, Old Town with uh, native, um Native American, um getting, trying to get that, but I think Diane came to you about the sign and, and stuff. And, and so things are moving forward on that and uh, uh, we have two hundred and fifty members uh, at the, at the museum, um, it's, we just lost a board member, Aaron Thomas. Board member, so we lost him, uh, he's been on the board for multiple years and a great asset to the group. Uh, so I, I don't know, that's, I think for saying what needs to be said about the town of Lincolnville, I, I think the Historical Society, I think fifteen hundred is more than fair. More than fair, that's mine.
And, and fifteen covers the possibility of a grease trap, right?
I know I'm gonna say that. I know, I'm not gonna say that because I don't, I don't, I don't have three years old quarters. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you something that, that is.
Okay, okay, no, I, I didn't know if that was any planned.
I couldn't complain, you say.
Then, no, that's all right.
You go.
This is not a complaint for us.
That's, that's for another time.
Any other questions regarding Historical Society? Is there anything else on my list I'd like for you to talk about so we could spend the whole night here instead of just that? Okay, thank you.
I do have, I have all kinds of pages, listen, please, please visit the cemeteries or call me up. And make an appointment, you know, I will take you to where I've been killed with what has been done. And uh, if you're not impressed, uh, you never will, I don't want to. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Ray.
I'm good, I got a smell of a lot of dog in my garage.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna stay on municipal support, thank you. Um, we're gonna skip a little bit down the page because uh, Magana Cook Watershed Association. Uh, we told Abby at six fifty-five would be her time, she wasn't sure if we were gonna make it. But we're gonna work our way down the page and if she's not here, we'll just do our best to explain it. So we've done Historical Society, Magana Cook Watershed, Cemeteries. Uh, the library is scheduled a little later, but I'm not sure, not till seven or five. Memorial Day, General Assistant, so Caleb Lacombe is our General Assistant Administrator, she'll talk to you about General Assistant.
Um, so the General Assistance has been different in the past couple of years than previous years. I have not been getting many heating requests or anything, I'm primarily getting uh, requests for rent assistance, which is primarily coming from the Blackwater's and which is now temporary housing. Um, I kept the requests the same. The numbers that you see that we actually spent is without the um, seventy percent reimbursement from the state. So we do have some flexibility in there, um, I just put the amount that we're actually spending in case for some reason we don't get the reimbursement. I wanted the actual expenses in there, so, um, but it seems to be covering it, um. And I know the state's talked about making some changes where timing out how many months people can apply, um, cause in some cases it can be unlimited or up to two years, which can, in certain situations.
Yeah, 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 there are discussions to move that, tho- those discussions to the bio.
So.
So not to get to it tonight, not for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so we'll see, but right now it, it has been busier than it has been in the past, just different.
Any questions regarding General Assistance? Well, gonna be out of here in a record time. Okay, continuing up down the page, uh, Moderator. Uh, we have, when we have town meetings, we pay the moderator a small stipend to moderate the meeting. Uh, Ballot Clerks, we have elections throughout the year, uh, obviously. And um, we, some ballot clerks volunteer their time and some get paid minimum wage to for their time to assist us. We've reduced that slightly for the coming year because hopefully we'll have less elections in the coming year than we had in the past year. We'll find out. Excuse me, uh, Registrar of Voters, uh, we have Registrar of Voters, that's primarily supplies um, for the Registrar, cause it is one of our administrative assistants. And the Lincolnville Improvement Association, I'm thinking unless somebody objects, I'm going to explain the requests on this page. And if somebody shows up, we'll give them the floor to explain. Um, Magana Cook Watershed Association is, um, yep, there's a paragraph within the, um budget itself, kind of request for explain their explanation. And Abby Kidder, their Executive Director, also sent us today not knowing whether or not she was going to be able to make it, this explanation that's coming around, it talks a little bit more about, um their program. If you want, I'll hit the highlights, I'm not a great representative of the Magana Cook Watershed Association. They have an organizational budget of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, have a hundred and ninety-five, a hundred and ninety-one members. Uh, I don't know what volunteers, twenty-five plus, two hundred, oh, they had twenty-five volunteers that donated two hundred dollars in twenty twenty-four. Uh, services to the town in Lincolnville in twenty twenty-five, they're talking, they do water testing for us at the Culver. Um, it enters Briesmer, not Briesmer, there's Norman Pond. They do water quality testing at Briesmer Park and then at the Bailey Bridge, which is the outlet to Norman Pond. For phosphorus, dissolved oxygen and conductivity and they have those analyzed. And then if there is an exceedance, they notify our code officer who posts an advisory again at Briesmer Park. They provide Lake Patrol in Magana Cook in Norman Pond for the months of May through November. In approximately three hundred, anticipate approximately three hundred hours in the coming year. They place a navigational buoys on the lake and at Norman Pond. They do surveys, uh, waterfront homes, uh, looking for erosion or runoff issues. Um, invasive plant protection, not planning, whatever that is. Uh, they, so they have, um, courtesy vote inspectors at Norman Pond periodically. At Boggs Bridge and at Route fifty-two, uh, launching ramps. And they have a, a rapid response fund for, um environmental incidents that might occur in the watershed. Abby also took the time to outline their goals for twenty twenty-five, which is to grow membership. Always a good goal for a nonprofit. Uh, carry out large scale surveys of the watershed to collect data on erosion controls runoff issue. Fund a hydraulic, hydrological study, survey of the watershed and build, build out a larger lake patrol team. I can't speak accurately, I mean, much of that, I read it to you for the back of any. Does anyone have questions they'd like for us to pursue with the watershed and get back to you? If not, or if you do after you get a chance to read that a little more in depth. I'm sure you can contact Abby on the phone number of Magana Cook Watershed Association website. Or reach out to either Kay or I and we'll reach out to the watershed and try to get some answers for you.
No, I, I bring this up every year, but the description of water testing compared to the water testing for lakes and ponds, seems to be a duplication of that.
Yeah, well, what the Lakes and Ponds Committee hopes to do, if you've known them there, they didn't spend any money. What they wanna do is when the Magana Cook Watershed Association has an exceedance, start to chase it back upstream to figure out where it's coming from and that's, they haven't, they just haven't done it.
So wouldn't upstream be drakes? Because, or out behind drakes because?
Well, it would be up Minno Brook or whatever you call it that goes up by.
But I was thinking those.
Didn't they a few years ago though have to do that, they did spend?
We tried, we tried to bracket it and by bracketing, um, if you get an exceedance here, you go upstream. You're getting an exceedance there, you go upstream and, and hopefully you find a spot where you don't have it and then you work the way you do, the way you don't, try to pull yourself in. Okay, it doesn't seem like an exceedance, but Magana Cook Watershed Association, it doesn't, isn't, well, hasn't thus far done that bracketing or chased it back. They just monitor once a week, they send, they come take a sample and get it analyzed, they let us know the results. Go from there, be back the next week.
And their lake control, I believe, don't they share that cost with the town of Camden, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
That would be a question then, I'm just, I'm just curious of their budget, you know, how much they're spending on paying lake patrol, I, I could have sworn that they split a cost with Camden's.
We'll, we'll pursue, I think Camden also has a police officer.
Yep.
But I'll, we'll face that now. Other questions regarding Magana Cook Watershed Association? Um, they were, um, helpful to us this past year too, is in terms of, uh getting our reassessors agent and our revale team out to the islands. Um, to do the inspections of those properties, cause I suggested they swim, but they didn't. Just go, might be option. Um, okay, so that Magana Cook Cemeteries, we did Lincolnville Community Library, there, there, there are um, two pages of explanation, I think that's the biggest explanation in the entire budget of where the money's coming from and going to. Um, I'm not going to, uh, read that to you, you're welcome. Um, the library is looking for a three thousand dollar donation, depending on what they receive this year.
David, could you ask, uh, library folks for next time, what their plans are specifically with the Digital Equity Center? They mentioned in twenty twenty-five, they wanna get that building, uh, using the National Digital Equity Center. Classes for adults, and if so, will they be working in any way with the remnants, I guess, of broadband committee and the National Digital Equity Center? With, with their, their program, their curriculum?
Yep, we will inquire, uh, they did list National Digital Equity Center classes for adults on page twenty of our. We will definitely inquire.
I'd be curious about that, because that, that's not a minor project, it's good size.
I'm not familiar with it, so.
Well, it could be, I, I didn't know if they could span to, it's like full potential or do a little bit or what the plans are.
It'd be good to, sorry, it'd be good to understand what their overall planning or strategy is with the averaging two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in brokerage accounts, doesn't appear that they use that to facilitate their budget. In the mid-year.
Yeah, I know that they've been seeking to grow their, their endowment basically, but it looks like the way and I'm definitely appreciative of this breakdown, cause in the past, it's sort of been like it, it, it appeared like the ask was sort of bonus money, it did, for lack of a better, but it looks like in this right-hand side that they're projecting a shortfall of about twenty-eight hundred bucks. Yeah, okay, so I guess that's where three. Oh, is that their, oh, that's their actual? So, I'm just, I guess, you know, that's what's driving the three ask. And that's based on? Yes, okay.
Well, 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 the three ask, the three ask has always been that it's necessary, they explain in their second paragraph. Uh, that they have to show municipal reasons by to the.
Yep.
So they can't think just out of their mind.
But it's a nondescript amount, there was no actual
Right.
Dollar figure.
No, no one's ever been able to determine.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions on the library that I can't answer, but we can find answers for?
Yeah, you could, you could ask them, uh, why they don't have a line item for like hot chocolate to reward all the people who shovel.
It sounds like it can be personal.
Uh, well, yeah. It didn't occur to me this morning, yeah.
Okay. Memorial Day, General Assistant, Moderator, Ballot Clerk for LA. I did not hear from James, we are above twenty. I did not hear from James, we are above twenty-seven minutes ahead of time.
Same goal could apply.
I will say that.
Message him.
Yeah, well, the Lincolnville Improvement Association. I gave you a little bit of a description about what they intend to do with the fifteen hundred dollars on page twenty-two. And I would encourage you to read it, because. That probably adequately describes it.
I certainly appreciate their. Tendency towards specificity for the ask rather than just a general amount. It really, it's. Helpful for me to be like, oh, okay, this is going to be an internship, so.
Is there anything, are you gonna, I'll go take a moment to read it, I'll just stop talking to you.
I'm good.
See no questions or we can extend to the LIA. I'm gonna turn the page to page twenty-three. And talking very, very, very briefly about provider agencies. Only to say provider agencies by town charter, the budget committee gets the first crack at. Making recommendations, the budget committee had a meeting, was that just last week? And they, to the best of my knowledge, haven't made their recommendations as yet. So until they do, the select board won't get a chance to make their recommendation. Well, I guess you could do it without the budget committee's recommendation.
They're supposed to be doing it next Wednesday.
I would encourage you not to. Turn the page to page twenty-four, we'll talk. Turn the page to page twenty-four, we'll talk briefly or as long as you want. About the capital improvement program as proposed for FY twenty-six. The first request is for thirty-five thousand for the fire truck fund. As the chief indicated when he was here on Tuesday, fire trucks aren't getting any cheaper. And so you know, we've had a. That's a five thousand dollar. Increase from last year, which was a five thousand dollar increase from the year before. I'm gonna tell you, we have four fire trucks and we replace them when they're. Aged out. And they're expensive. Road Improvement Fund. We have about seven point nine miles of gravel roads or dirt roads in Lincolnville in twenty-six and a half. Give or take, paid. The purpose of the fund is to have monies to upgrade the roads to a better standard or make safety improvements. Or other improvements to town roads. This summer, we will be replacing a large culvert on. Young Town Road at Hardy Brook. Good news that everybody can be now rolled into, we, we. Received Army Corps permit. This week, so. We, the project will probably be out to bid. Certainly by the end of the month, I think.
Great.
And. Plan for road closure sometime in July and hopefully reopen before school starts. That's going to be. Several hundred thousands of dollars to replace one culvert. We did receive a two hundred thousand dollar grant. To do that, pay for part of that work. But they're expensive, they're big, it's a new way with, on streams for fish passage. Aquatic animals and fish, so. Hang on, the next major project that we internally have planned is for the Morton Road. Which is a. Gravel road off from Tucker Brook Road. That is not in the best of condition, well, not bad today, because it's frozen, but it's. The next one I've evolved.
So that remains a town road, but not to the. Elbots of the house on the end.
Correct.
But there's a turnaround there, right?
Yes.
There will be a turnaround.
The owner of the property did not wish for the town road to continue to his thing of turnaround, would we turn around there now? I would throw that there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Haven't been out there in a while, so the road is deteriorating.
The road is. Call the wood round two in the spring.
Plan is not paid, it's just to.
Oh, the, the, the plan will be to dig it out and pave the frame. Excuse my language. Farm at the end is the place that the town owned for a short period of time, there's Mercedes and. There's four, it is an option, a possibility of a fifth on the right if somebody wanted to do something more.
Yeah.
It's not a very long road. But it is. It needs more than attention. Glad I don't live on the road.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, fire away.
Two hundred thousand dollar grant?
Yeah.
Did you get the money? Yeah.
It's a state grant, doesn't have any. They got that from you and I as taxpayers from a bond issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's coming up again. Bond issue and put it in a budget and. A repository for grants.
We have others that we might pursue in the future. The one, if you're not familiar with the Hardy Brook, Brook Crossing. We believe it was built by the Conservation Corps in the thirties. If you, oh, oh, good, James is here, early. If you venture off the side of the road by more than six inches, you'd be in the.
Yeah, it's, it's skinny.
James, you're here early. Good, so then we've already talked about your thing, but we'll talk about it again.
Thanks for venturing out.
How were they?
They're not great. It's very nice to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so you have to talk. So this is James from the Lincolnville Improvement Association, we're going back to nineteen. The last week last on page nineteen is the Lincolnville, like, the Lincolnville Improvement Association. You all have the description that they provided to us, but James will tell you a little bit more about what happened.
Okay, well, thank you for inviting me, first of all, and. I should tell you that I am the new president of the Lincolnville Improvement Association.
Congratulations.
Weeks ago.
Or condolences.
And just for a little background, I've only lived here for two years. So I'm still feeling my way.
They really pull my cue.
Well, you know, I need someone to. And that's what I've been doing a lot, I've been volunteering a lot at different places. And I got the time because I'm retired. And I always hope to try and put some of my experience to, to goodness. You know, on the committees and, and some other things. Plus, I really, really like living here. Anything you can do. I'm not one to. So I kind of backed into this idea. And it, to be quite honest, when you, it's not my idea. But I think it's potentially a very good idea and you have a statement in front of me. So I don't have to read that. But the idea is that we wanted to try and create this. This Lincolnville Service Internship Program. And one of the reasons why we want to do this is. I hope, I don't know that, but we're not getting any younger. The group's really advanced in age, you know, many of us, you know, over sixty. And it's time to get younger people who are interested in this community and including this community. And keeping this place as wonderful as it is, you know, it's time to get them involved. And I get it, I, you know, I raised two kids with my wife, I know being a young family is, it's tough. Especially now, it's crazy, it's digital, it's, it's so many, there's so many other things going on. But somebody has to step into the void, because we're not going to be here forever. So it, it's time to try and build on that. And one of the things that I learned is that the organization was trying to build out their website. And it gets a little complicated, because again, it's digital. I haven't come from a digital life. I know what I know, I know how to get around these things, but I can't follow the website. I don't, you know, I don't have the ability to know that. You know, you have to make all these connections on these websites and, you know, things of that nature. So what we were hoping to do was find somebody younger. Who, a college student, not a freshman, sort of wants someone who's over grounded. To be able to help us do these kinds of things. And then also to reach out to the younger community, maybe be a mentor of some of the younger kids and get them involved. In the community in different ways, so what we'd like to do, what is sort of built, you know, we have the basic foundation. We'd like to do, or we want to build it out as, as we go. And the organization is willing to front. Get us up to forty-five hundred dollars and we would front three thousand of them. For the year, it's basically, it's a scholarship, but it's very much like a stipend as well. And there's some wonderful things that, you know, that we've done, I mean, you can create some stewardship. You know, because the summer's very busy at the beach, there's never anybody there who might be able to answer questions, to talk to tourists. To make sure that they go to our businesses to have lunch. They may not know that the general store is here, and the same thing is true if they come to Town Center. And they could be at Briesmer, and I know a lot of our volunteer involved people, because I was both expected last year and I got to meet many of them. All wonderful in a way, but there are people who come here from, from other places, and they're in also Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, whatever. And you want to be able to tell them about them and where they can go, kind of all that about. And that, to me, also builds relationships, you know, like. I remember this, the place I was last year and that kid came up to me or those kids came up to me. And they asked me if I needed help with this, or did I want to go find a good place to eat? Or just in general. Those, those are the kinds of things I've done. And this is just, just assisting with. Simple things like, you know, the maintenance of the benches down at, at the beach. You might want to do them, or you might want to do some things in the, in the, in the Briesmer or Disney Dome. Or maybe on the dock, I think it's just a bit. I mean, that's something. That they can then reach out to their friends and maybe get them involved. So it's that kind of thing that we're thinking about. And then tangentially hoping that mom and dad will start to be interested.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
They got to assist us with the wingding. It's been, it's evolved and it's getting a little more complicated now that we've lost restaurants down there. It's our biggest fundraiser. And we want to continue it and, you know, I've known about it for years as a summer person. And it's, it's got a lot of traction and then like, see, just move forward. So that's my spiel and your.
Questions for Don?
Over the next year, you expect to be asked to doubling, to double the ask of the town? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Not necessarily, necessarily, I mean. Again, if the wingding is successful, as it has been. We might be able to do that again, you know, just moving forward. And we can see this, this might not take off as well as I would like it to. But we'll, you know, certainly give it the up and anything.
A lot could happen to you.
Sure.
Well, thank you so much for the really comprehensive explanation.
You drove all the way in here and now you have to drive all the way.
You're welcome to.
It's beautiful, I mean, even in the dark and the snow, I mean. It's so beautiful, so am I. No complaints.
Yeah, I think, I think you're free. Thank you, drive safely.
We'll flip back to page twenty-four and continue on with the discussions of the capital improvement program. I don't know if I concluded on road improvement or if anybody had. Any additional questions on?
Yesterday, when. Donnie was here talking about fire department and the cost of fire trucks and the seven-year thing and. And I know we've got the Lincolnville Community Foundation that's. Giving a significant portion toward the fire trucks, but he did mention that, that most recent. Not us buying, but somebody he was quoted as being what, nine hundred thousand dollars for. To replace the truck, and I'm just wondering. If, I mean, I know we've put an extra five in the last two years running, but are we still lagging behind on what we need to do to? Keep this fund. Appropriate for the eventual time when we have to expend it on a truck. Because we're talking a seven-year plan, and if now we're looking more at. Five hundred thousand is our share of a truck. That's not thirty-five thousand a year, so.
It's not. We do, these funds are invested, which helps us. But. Thirty-five's not. In the long run, it's probably not enough money. But the incremental change is also challenging, and I think the decision was made to do it incrementally versus. You know, asking for a hundred thousand dollars.
Ouch it up every year, right, yeah.
Well, we're gonna pay now or pay later and. We're, we're in hopes that perhaps the. Community Foundation continues with their generous donations and maybe those might enhance. Too, depending on how well their investments do and.
So we figure five thousand a year is still an okay increment.
We didn't, we didn't have anything better to go, so.
And, and when the select board reviews this, anyone is welcome to throw out another number for us to. Robustly debate.
Nine hundred million dollars?
Yeah, when the final. Well.
Well, not, no, not necess, not necessarily.
We have to pay it all.
Yeah, we have to.
Fortunately for us, there's a Lincolnville Community Foundation, very generous, making donations to the town. Specifically for the fire department and those. Their generous donation varies depending on how well their. Investments do, I guess is the best way to put it. And we're gonna. If we're gonna continue to replace a truck every, when it's thirty years old or twenty-seven years old. We're gonna have to figure out a way to come up with the money.
So every, every seven years, we have to buy one truck. Yeah, and the foundation, do you remember how much? Percent they've been able to contribute?
Originally, it was about half.
Yeah.
They're, they're ahead of us on the next one. In terms of how much money they've contributed versus how much we set aside, yeah.
So if they do have over the years, then we're on hook for five hundred thousand. Divided by seven years, and it's seventy-one thousand, and we're all setting aside less than that, right?
Right, with the exception of years, one money will have been invested for seven years or eight. And our. Wealth management company that does our investments has been. Getting fairly good return without a lot of.
Yeah.
Risk. I mean, there's always risk when you invest, a lot of it's insured, and a lot of it's in, you know, bonds versus stocks, and. So.
We, and it does say, I don't know if you, you saw, John, that as of January thirty-first, two weeks ago. It's about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand that's sitting in the fire truck reserve account for the town.
The other thing that goes um, into the fire truck fund from the town itself. Is if there are any funds left over in the fire department budget at the end of the year. Um, instead of going into unassigned fund balance, because townspeople long ago voted that anything left in the fire department fund. For the fire department account at the end of the year goes into the fire truck reserve fund, so our donation is, you know. We think we act budget accurately, but.
It's not static.
Right, but I mean, there's other, there are other monies to town that go into that fund, too.
Your guess judgment is probably okay, and we don't need to say anything, let's give them a little.
Um, this was the number we came up with this year, so we're not, when, that's the ask.
We've slight, I mean, you can see we've slightly increased, I mean, we bumped it by five thousand dollars every, every year, feeling like that, what. We all are willing to put the straight face test to asking for an additional amount.
Moving down to, we did road improvement, the solar array equipment. Uh, we budgeted five thousand dollars uh, this past year, and we were looking to put another five thousand dollars aside. Uh, should something go south over there, basically the inverters, you have five inverters there. That convert the power, so it can go out onto the grid. Um, I believe we were told those cost about seventy-five hundred dollars a piece. To replace, so, um, I would think that that this would probably be. Uh, the last request we would have for a while for that, because we're not anticipating them all going to bunk at once, but. To be prepared, sure. Uh, building repair fund, um, we're looking at the beach fire station that at some point uh, is likely to be replaced is. And the new beach fire station built away from the beach. But looking at uh, siding trim and windows for that building.
For the new building?
No, for the old building, to maintain it in good condition. It has cedar shakes on it now, and with the exception, maybe a total volunteer payment, I don't think anybody's done much to it.
What's, do we have a, an idea of? The time that that current building will remain with us?
Uh, well, I think it's gonna remain with the town for a long, long, long time, but as a fire station. Maybe five, ten years out, might be looking to replace.
Okay.
Change the location, if you're not familiar with it, that uh. Twice last year in January, that water, that building had water in it from the storms. Um, and it's not, it's, it's no longer ideally located, it's a challenging spot to get in and out of with a fire truck that doesn't fit in the building to begin with.
Yeah.
And for those of you that don't know, the town or the Community Foundation made a donation to the town here, probably. I think probably six or eight years ago now, um, purchased a piece of land on the beach road. For dealt to move, move to where the station would go.
But we don't have any plan yet to begin.
No.
Looking at constructing the new.
No, we s, we started off on the, um, down that road. Couple of years ago, when that. They, fire department decided that they maybe didn't wanna go pursue that any further at that time, so we stopped.
Yeah, as far as we know, we're looking for direction from the fire department to, when, when we need to start making significant plans.
They have been making donations to us.
In anticipation.
Inticipation of that.
Well, I guess I'm only concerned because it's going to be a multi-year project, right, to come up with plans and bids and construction and.
Yeah, I talked about that in our, in our workshop.
So any more floods like last year, right, hurt things along?
Um, I don't know, I mean, if, if we know that, that the trucks and equipment get moved out of the building. Um, the building does have a, a concrete knee wall that goes all the way around, and the water can come in and the water can go out. It's not, not good for any building to be inundated with salt water, but.
But we also relocated a couple of sensitive items after the flood, so, so that they aren't going to be. Basically, short circuited.
Uh, wasting the stuff higher than that.
Yeah.
Not an ideal situation.
Yep. Harbor.
Uh, harbor improvements, um, the handrail that surrounds our pier is uh, tired. Uh, so we're looking to replace that, and then uh, we have a request for a new float. That would be a third float on the east end, if you had. Headed towards Alkborough, um, new to us, and the moorings and a little bridge to connect it to the second float.
Great.
To increase capacity, and certainly when the um. New ferry slip is constructed, um, and we issued. Can't remember how many, new seventeen, I think, new moorings this year, and people show up with new dinghies, and we're gonna be hopping down there.
So, so this is a, a float that's in addition to what we are.
Yes, we have replaced, yes, we have five floats at the pier now, well, not today. Uh, we have five in the high season, um, during the winter season, we have three. We put two into storage, because we don't have the usage down there, and certainly the last one out. Uh, it's a little more exposed than anybody would like, particularly to the winter storms. Uh, this, this, so this would take us from five to six there in seasonally, and would be located. Most furthest east towards Alkborough.
In our, and I know our program is very, very young, um, the program for. Maintenance on infrastructure and replacement and this, that.
Yeah.
But I do know that, I think we've been keeping track when the floats were displaced, and when are we. Uh, for replacement, or?
We probably won't be replacing one of the, um, one of the five.
Yeah.
For. Sixteen years probably before the first one, yeah. These ones, they're constructed a little differently now, we don't have as much wood in the water. Uh, which saves us, um, we no longer use blue styrofoam, and now have the uh.
Yeah.
Encapsulated flotation, which prolongs their life a little bit, and.
Right, you see, yeah, okay, that's good.
Um, where do we sit with the boat grant? I know that there was direction from the harbor committee and the select board for. Getting that role.
Yep.
Um, and there was talk about needing additional funds for that effort, wasn't there?
I don't think we need additional funds for the next step.
No, okay. I know we have money already set aside for permitting, et cetera.
Yep.
But I didn't know if we were going back to the drawing board for design.
Well, we were going back to the drawing board, but we have a discussion on March third that might change that.
Okay.
Is that talking to code amounts?
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that if.
Yeah.
Something's rattling around in it, grab it.
Uh, and that concludes what we're requesting for FY twenty-six under capital. You'll note that we've got some other items listed there, but that, that's been previous years, things that have been accomplished, that have already been accomplished. Anybody have any questions? I could talk very slowly about debt service, because we don't wanna go home early. Uh, debt service, debt service is on page twenty-five. Um, Corray, uh, in FY twenty-four, the town paid off its uh, money for a road bond. Uh, in, in FY, it's not in this budget, but you'll see the school budget. In FY twenty-six, the school debt service will be paid off, correct? Uh, and the only other thing we have on here that's actually in this budget in front of you is the town. Uh, obligated itself to make uh, nineteen thousand dollar a year payments to Lincolnville Sewer District. To assist in their debt service, uh, FY twenty-six will be the fourth of ten payments. That we'll make to that entity. So. Any questions about the obligation that down loaded to be as well? And we're gonna continue to pay that until it's done. Uh, that brings us to revenues in budget offsets, and believe it or not, uh, the total expenditures. Uh, proposed for FY twenty-six is a little over three point three million dollars. Uh, which is a nine and a half percent change from the current year's budget that was approved. Uh, in terms of revenue and budget offsets, uh, with very limited exceptions, we plugged in last year's numbers. Uh, the exceptions, well, I'll just run down on boat excise, um, we're budgeting five thousand dollars, like we have for a long, long time. Uh, vehicle excise is uh, currently budgeted for at six hundred thousand dollars, so when you come in to register your car and you pay your excise tax, that stays right. Down, use it to, um, pay for our services. Local road assistance monies comes to us from the state. Um, we budgeted forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars based on what we, I think what we got. In FY twenty-four, because they told us it should stay the same, and we've already received fifty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Come to us once a year, um, and they told us that best budget number would be to stay with what we got this year, so this. We propose five, fifty-five, six, sixteen. Um, fund balance, um, again, propose the same as what we've got in the current budget. If we could get our audit completed before we put the budget together, we could put a better number in there, but. I won't beat that dead horse again tonight, like yesterday night. Uh, municipal revenue sharing is proposed a, a substantial drop. Um, revenue sharing is not proposed to drop, but number of years ago, we budgeted. Um, zero in revenue sharing, because there was the movement and the guts to eliminate it. Um, and we'd said we would just catch ourselves up in future years, uh, which we did. And the auditor suggested we take so much money a year, which we've done. And without the audit, we don't know if we have any extra beyond what they're telling us, the treasurer says we're gonna get two hundred ninety-eight thousand fifty-one dollars, so. Until we come up with some better number, we're running with that. Uh, harbor fees and donations, we have increased our budget from ten thousand dollars to fifteen. Um, you can see we've received fifteen thousand, some change in revenue already in this current fiscal year. Plus, we've, uh, we're allocating, we've assigned, or will be assigning. Uh, additional moorings this year to people that have been on the waitlist, so we're comfortable that that number could be higher. Uh, American Rescue Plan Act is zero, because American Rescue Plan Act has ended, and we've allocated all those funds that we received. And Article nineteen from June of twenty-three was a special town meeting appropriation. We no longer have available to us, because we're no longer in twenty-three. So revenues are, non-property tax revenues are estimated at one million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars. Uh, the net to be raised in the gray line is what we're proposing for expenditures. Less the revenues we anticipate receiving, um, which is what has to be paid for our property taxes. Uh, once again, I'll remind you that the municipal side of the budget is about fourteen point three percent of your property tax dollars. So if you see thirty percent in that column, doesn't mean your taxes are going up thirty percent if you have to get moved. With that, I would say what I always say is that if you have questions as you review this moving forward. Feel free to contact Kayla or I to get some answers for you. Um, we've got a long way to go between now and the middle of June, when it'll be voted on a town meeting. Select Board will be continuing the deliberation as part of their upcoming meetings, both February and in March. Then ultimately, this will be, uh, they'll complete their whole recommendations, and this will move forward to the Budget Committee. With explanations of all the changes and anything else the Budget Committee wishes to talk about moving. In hopes to get, oops, sorry, in hopes to get all of Budget Committee recommendations at the April first to May, so it'll be included in the town meeting warrant. You can all vote on it in June.
Um, back in the capital, for the program, the solar equipment line. We expended on the budget, and just trying to figure that out year over year. Doesn't, well, tends to me.
I think it's because we expended it and we transferred it into, you know, investment, probably.
Okay. The forty-three thousand that was expended in last year.
I'm gonna say the forty-three thousand is a typo.
Okay.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how we expend forty-three thousand on a uh, five thousand dollar item.
Yeah.
But.
It was probably aligned at.
It probably, yeah. It's the second typo I've been able to find.
Not too shabby.
I didn't find that one.
Not too shabby. All right, any other questions?
Um, I don't want, but if it, the benefit, you talk, talk, we'll go back to Rose's usual request for money for the cemetery.
Yeah.
In mowing, key, things of that nature, is there any more conversation about the? The two cemeteries on.
Uh, we have not been approached. Be quite a while about the cemetery on Hill.
I know with that song, you know, it was an older gentleman, who did a lot of work, and he was very excited. Um, equipment, and I think he may have even supplied gas and water. Don't anticipate that going for years and years and years. I'm concerned about that.
Mm-hmm.
And I wonder, do we have a. It's not a town responsibility.
Right.
But what, what would we do if somebody finally came to us and said, can't do this anymore?
Uh, for the benefit of everybody in the room, the town has no town cemeteries, we don't own, operate, whatever. Uh, we have responsibilities set forth for us in state statute. That are, major of veterans' graves, which we are required to do, or see that they get done. And then we have some responsibilities for ancient abandoned cemeteries, which is what Rosie talked about earlier. Beyond that, there are a number of cemeteries that are either incorporated in town, or have been so maintained by associations in town. Um, which are all in various states of financial condition that way. Uh, if somebody from uh, one of, an association came to the town and said. We don't have anybody left, you know, I'm it, we don't have any money left. We spend all we, all we have, what can the town do? Uh, we would explore what options are available to us, which would be. Um, speaking with the town attorney. Usually, not unlike a road, if somebody wanted to take a private road and make it become a public road, there has to be an offering. To say, we have the right and ability to transfer this to you. Um, or perhaps it could be, I'm just winging this up, and perhaps it could be a taking. You know, an eminent domain to clear the, so the town could have a vested interest, we are prohibited. By the main constitution from expanding public resources for the benefit of private entities or individuals. Um, the public purpose doctor, I think it's what it's called, but don't pull me on that one. Um. So we need the town, can't go move Dave's Kenny's lawn and pay for it. Just that, you know, that's a known. Um, now, if Dave Kenny could give you the acreage around his home for you, you know, to, for the town people to vote to accept, we could then. Spend money on it. Um, there are exceptions for certain things that are required of us by. So, in the case of a cemetery, if a cemetery association came to the select vote and said. We're just done, we're tired, we're whatever. Can you take this? We could explore methodologies to acquire that property and each one is going to be. Would have to be measured on its own merits and how that was maintained before. Like, I know at least one of our cemeteries here in town is a corporation. If corporations, you know, live on and they can. Figure out how expensive it is. Um, but it's, um, I mean, if they were long time abandoned cemeteries. They may fall under the ancient and abandoned cemetery statute and the town might be able to do more. Me, but the cemetery you're referring to aren't ancient and aren't abandoned as yet.
There's not many tanks.
Right. And it's, it's.
It's a process.
It, it's a process and it, it's sad, I mean, these are the people that came before us that, you know. Toiled in the soil or whatever and have passed. And, you know, most of us like to honor those that came before us, at least to a certain level. But until somebody asks for help, I mean, we, we're not gonna kick the door in here, it's our money, okay?
Got a question about the cemetery, so then I just noticed on page twenty two, bottom says they're both be carried forward in uh. Sixty five hundred and sixty three hundred dollars.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so. And I'm sorry, I just noticed that, that would have asked, that mean that cemeteries. Twenty twenty six, you know, budget. Is ninety six hundred plus sixty three fifty five.
Yeah, we don't know right now what's going to remain in the cemetery's account or any other to be carried forward, that's our best. Estimate as of today.
Yeah.
But certainly, if you recall several years ago, or I don't think it was last year, I think it was two years ago, a town meeting.
I do.
Uh, townspeople raised additional monies to be used for. Um, improving cemeteries or restoring cemeteries. And cemetery trustees didn't get as, either got it done less expensively or didn't get as much done as they'd hoped they would get done. And I think it's the latter, not the former.
Yeah, he did indicate that they are gonna try to get a bunch more stuff done this spring before the end of this fiscal year, so I bet you that numbers.
But, 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 but the point.
Yes, we're gonna.
We do expect carry.
Yeah, I, well, I would be surprised if there wasn't.
Okay, good.
I don't know the magnitude, but that's the magnitude, that's a December thirty first.
Is there no?
Just gonna say other questions.
I was gonna say, if there are no other questions, anyone wanna make a move?
Yep, Robin has a question.
Can you go back to the vehicle excise? I think I just kind of missed the level funding or the, the idea of what we expect from revenues.
Um, because we're not quite sure if we're gonna wanna hit the target for this year. And if we can budget more, we. Come back to you and tell you we budget more, but. We encourage everybody to go buy a new car and an expensive one, please.
It goes down for the first six years, so buying less new cars, that's a little bit harder.
Yeah.
So, and it's not the kind of thing that is sort of constant over the year.
No, people buy new cars at different times in the year and it's not. It's not one twelve buying vehicles every month, and if you look, we've collected three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars through the half year. Uh, it's not gonna be six hundred and thirty by the time the year's done. Slow year for cars.
I haven't been able to notice as many new cars coming in.
Any other questions? We will have more opportunities to have further conversations. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion. Move in second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
I could ask you to shut out, uh, did you take notes in that one?